I've never been to one, and I would, I would like to go to one, but I think going to an NSBA thing probably isn't very popular right now. Cause Arkansas is withdrawn, so.
I was.
No, I did, I had been to one. I went to the one in, no, that wasn't a, that was the regional.
Okay, everybody, thank you for coming to the January 11th Russell School Board meeting. We'll get started here. Media was notified. Time is six oh one. And we will stand and do the pledge of allegiance. And the student of month presentation.
Mister President.
Congratulations to everybody that was chosen to be student or employee of the month. I'd like to read a quick statement. The board would like to recognize the passing of one of our former superintendents, Mr. Harvey Young, who passed away last Friday at the age of ninety-five. Mr. Young served as the Russellville Superintendent from nineteen seventy-one to nineteen eighty-four. He was a Navy veteran of World War Two and later taught classes at the Little Rock Air Force Base. He developed the idea of a series of educational co-ops and as a result of lobbying effort, efforts, twelve Arkansas Educational Service Co-ops were organized. He ended his career as an adjunct history professor at Arkansas Tech. Mr. Harvey served on numerous civic boards and was a true community servant. We extend our condolences to his family during this time and we are thankful for the impact he had made on the Russellville High School, or Russell School District, excuse me. So, everybody keep his family in prayers. I did not know, uh, Mr. Mr. Young a little bit before my time, but, um, the few people I've talked to, uh, over the last week, um, I have nothing but positive things to say. I don't know if anybody here knew him, um, on, on this board and would like to say something. Ms. Wayne, go right ahead. For yours.
Back a few years ago, like in nineteen eighty, um, Mr. Young took a chance on a young math teacher, uh, who had graduated from Russell High School and Arkansas Tech University. And, you know, forty years later, here I am on the school board. So, uh, he was a wonderful person and he, uh, gave a lot of people, uh, their first opportunity to teach in the Russellville District.
I've had the privilege of getting to know Mr. Young over the years and of course, he's always been a tremendous supporter of Russell School District. Uh, his last several years got to be, got to drink a little coffee with him in retirement and enjoy him on that level, but, he's also been a really good supporter of the arts. He's been a great patron of the arts, so, uh, just a, a good man has lots of friends here. He will, will be missed.
Thank you. Okay, we're on down to number four. There is no addenda items to approve.
Jason, uh, just before we move on, kind of with the student of the month, I meant to say it at the last board meeting. Um, I want to take a moment to acknowledge the ACE Award winners there at the school. That was a new award that I was not aware of. It was Academics Creed Excellence Award. And apparently they give it twice a year, so shout out to all those students.
Absolutely. Thank you, Holly. So that brings us to, um, number five. COVID discussion. So here's how I'd like to do this tonight. Um, the district is going to make a presentation that they've worked hard on and, and they've worked hard on it for eighteen months. And it's not unfortunately dead gum going away. Um, and so after the presentation, um, I'd like to have a discussion among the board members and then a motion. And so I think it's a, a, a living document, right Judy? So as we make recommendations and adds and deletes, Ms. Judy will, uh, and Brittany or whoever's doing it over there, will, will make those corrections and then we will make a motion at the end. Once we have the corrections. That's fair. That's right. Okay. That's true. So we won't make the, that's right. Okay. So, if it's a consensus of the board to make the corrections that we speak about, then, then we'll get there. But I don't want to make a motion and then have a discussion. I want to do the discussion and the motion. So that's what we're going to do. So with that, RSD administration, if for yours.
Good evening. First of all, just, you said eighteen months and you are correct. It's been a non-stop, pretty much the entire last couple of years. So it's, lots gone into trying to create and improve. And that's what we're, that's what we've done here. Uh, again, I want to thank, you know, Ms. Turner, Dr. Turner and, and the nurses that put in unbelievable hours. The district admin team, the, uh, all the building leaders, uh, everybody's had a, had a hand in this, so, this is our proposal. Uh, due to increased COVID nineteen cases, it's recommended that, uh, Russell School District pivots to virtual learning, meaning AMI days, for two days, Thursday, January thirteenth and Friday, January fourteenth. This will allow for more intense cleaning and disinfection while our current isolated and quarantined staff, students, staff and students are at home. RSD is already out for Martin Luther King Junior Day on Monday, January seventeenth. School on campus will resume on Tuesday, January eighteenth. The following guidelines would be implemented at that time.
You're more than welcome to.
I'm a lot shorter than him, so hopefully you can hear me. Okay, so when we look at COVID signs and symptoms, we're seeing so many kids with symptoms coming in. Um, so to help that, we created an email address, just covid@rsdk12.net. And we're really asking parents, if you have a child that has, you know, that certain set of symptoms, fever, um, runny nose, cough, that's abnormal essentially, then you email and you get some direction on what to do to try to keep them from coming into campus. And so at that time, our staff, typically Annie, Shanick and I, will respond to those parents to help them understand what steps they should follow. And we're really looking at more than one sign. If you've got a cough by itself, that's probably just a cough, right? But you, if you have more than that, it may be COVID. Um, or other illnesses going around, strep throat, flu, you know, other things right now. So, you would stay home more than likely until you meet that criteria, you have COVID and you know what you have to do, or those symptoms are resolving, you're fever free for twenty-four hours, or you have, you have to be fever free for twenty-four hours, but you could also have a negative test. And any questions? Or you can just keep going. I don't know if you wanted me to stop in between. Um, we will also offer to test those students. So not just the test to state program, but a once point in time test. So we may say, you know what your symptoms sound like it, come on up, we'll test you and we have a consent form for that. And you may have a teacher bring a child up and say they have these symptoms. We may contact mom and dad and say, they have these symptoms, you need to come get them and we may offer to test them as well. And that'll really be up to the discretion of the parents and the nurses and those symptoms. And if we have a child that comes up every day and they cough every day, you're probably not going to test them for COVID, for example. Isolation, it's really following along with what the CDC says. So you test positive, we do the five and five rule. You're home for five days isolated, you wear a mask for day six through ten. That isolation starts on the day your symptoms start or the day you get a positive test and whichever one comes first. Some are testing asymptomatic on day one and by day two, that's when their symptoms start. Your five day start on that day one that you test positive. And if signs and symptoms persist, the students are going to be sent to school. And day six, don't come to school if you have a fever. Day six is my symptoms are resolving. I've been twenty-four hours without a fever. And possible close contacts. So these are not kids that have tested positive. These are kids that were within that three feet radius, okay? For fifteen minutes or more cumulative. That is how the CDC describes that. And we want to keep kids at school. I think we all have that goal. Um, it's the governor's goal, that's our goal. We want to keep them there if at all possible. And so our parents may opt to do the test to state program. And one caveat to that is we would like to request, right now it's tests for seven days. We would like it to be five, just to match everything else that the CDC has put out. And if they opt out, then they would have to quarantine. And nurses will continue to require those testing to stay to wear their mask and throughout that full quarantine period. Any questions, comments, before I let Jeff finish up?
Are we waiting or are we asking?
No, I'd really wait.
Okay.
Okay, uh, with mask recommendations, the Russell School District recommends masks in our schools, but recognizes the rights of parents to decide what is best for their own children. Questions we've had is how does this pertain to, uh, activities? Uh, all students participating in the AAA sanctioned events will be required to adhere to those rules. They actually have stiffer rules than, than what we have here. Uh, we also have a robotics, uh, tournament coming Saturday that will still carry on, so, none of those will change. They will still practice, um, and they will still play the games, so.
Differentiate between athlete and fan. I mean, if I'm participating as a fan or I'm participating as an athlete?
Okay, so, so an athlete. So if an athlete is tested positive, they, obviously they will be the five days quarantine. Now for them to return, there's a protocol from the AAA. They can't just come back on that six day play. That, through the next five days, they get to gradually work their way into practice with, with a mask. They cannot participate without a mask. And finally, on that fifth day that they come back, that's when they're allowed to participate. That's AAA guidelines. We have no say so in that until they change that. Fans, when you come in, it's your option. You want to wear a mask. So we are not going to determine if you wear a mask or not in, in the, in the stands.
AAA is also making our athletes have a doctor's note before they return.
So at this time, so, presentation over, which is correct. So it's question and answer session, so, I know everybody has a lot of questions and, and, uh, what do you need, Mr. Vining? Oh, you stay up there, okay.
No, I just told him to stay up there. He's like answering.
Got it. So we'll open the floor up. Um, if, if somebody would just kind of let me know, that way we're not talking over each other and I'll give you the floor. That'd be the easiest way to do it.
Go first.
I'll go first. Keister, for yours.
Um, first, I just want to, um, tell everybody in our district that's been working on this. Um, I appreciate everything. Um, you guys are doing, nurses, Brittany, I mean, they're, they're crazy. I've been emotional about this all day, as most up here know. But I am thankful for our district and administrators, teachers, anybody involved with this, whether you believe this or that or whatever. Um, we're all in this together and we're going to ride it out together and so, um, my initial statement is, um, before that is, I, I, I've had both rounds of COVID. I've been vaccinated. Um, I haven't done a real great job wearing a mask, so I can't really testify to that. But what I can testify to is I've had, um, two healthy kids, one sick kid and a sick wife and a sick husband, which is me. Um, the effects I saw on my young, my son, um, and some of you may know him, some of you don't. I'm not saying he's perfect. He talks back, doesn't clean his room, there's things that go on, but the little guy flipped out and he doesn't flip out. Now Jeremy, he might flip out, but, um, his son, he doesn't flip out. And when he realized that he could not go to school, he could not go to Christmas, and he was healthy, never, never had the virus. Um, that bothered me as a dad, probably would bother you as a, a mother, father, uncle, aunt, whatever. Um, I do not want healthy kids isolated to their house. I'm not a doctor. I don't run tests. I, I can't determine who's healthy and who's not. He was healthy and he was isolated to his room, um, all but a Zoom to open some presents. That bothers me, not only for my kid, but for yours too. And I'm sure some of your teachers know more stories than that. Now I had another, the other, um, kid sick. Um, she did her time in prison and she got out and had to wear a mask for five days along with her, her, a dad. She and I are just alike. It creates an anxiety. It creates an uneasiness. Um, it creates a barrier. And it bothers me as a person and it bothers me as a dad. Now you can't, you're not making, I'm not making you feel sorry for me. Um, but as a board member, I feel like I can make some statements and ask some questions to maybe help some other kids not have to go through with that. Again, I do not want to quarantine healthy kids and we are, okay? Um, the kid that got tested positive had symptoms for maybe two days. I'll give you the third one. Um, was fine. Um, logged that week. I think she logged seven and a half miles running and walking our road. Half of those times were in tears. Um, we're already on break. We're not at school yet. But the fear that went through her mind, the mental barriers and blocks that she had to overcome, um, we're going to see this twenty years from now, I'm just telling you. Our decisions tonight and previously are going to be with our kids twenty years from now, okay? Somebody may die tomorrow. That's going to be with us. But twenty years from now, I can't see that and I'm seeing things in my kids and other kids that's, you're going to see in twenty years and you're going to regret, maybe not, or you're going to bless these decisions we're making. And so, um, number one question, uh, and I've asked a lot of these, but these are some new ones that, that have come to me. What is the purpose of, of the district in testing?
Well, one reason is we don't want students going to school positive and being able to give that to somebody else. So the best way to know if a student or a faculty member has COVID is to test them. So, a great example, you have it, I'm sitting by you, I'm going to be asked to quarantine. Well, I feel great. Why am I going home? I want an option to stay at home. This is the option that we can give students to stay at home.
I'm sorry, I fault you.
Stay at school.
So this is no comparison. I'm sure I'll get shot for this, but, um, as I've gotten tested for COVID, I've also gotten tested for bronchitis, for the flu, um, other things. And this last time I asked if they were going to test and they said it's all in one. I don't know if that's true or not. But we're not offering testing for any other virus. I understand, I don't want to compare because I don't want to go through arguments and, but at what point does the district say, we need to stop testing? There's testing facilities around and maybe there's more, maybe it's free, maybe there's other things that we can ta, talk about. And, and the other part of that is, uh, visiting and hearing from the nurses. We're keeping spreadsheets. I can't imagine how many spreadsheets, based on what I've heard, we're keeping to trace this on the backside. Let alone keep up with that communication. The other thing that it makes me think of is all of the diabetic students that we have. I think somebody, I was on, I was on the medical, um, team or committee and they show how these nurses track these students. There's no way we're able to keep up with these high-risk students like we should to because of, in my opinion, some of the non-beneficial things, you know, activities that we're doing. The, the other thing is, we, we talk about ways to, um, to protect and I know we have high-dollar machines that fog rooms. Talk to a local school thirty minutes away. Uh, it's a smaller school, but they fog between every class period. I don't know. I haven't been in a lot of schools or a lot of, you know, many of them at one time, but are we, are we fogging? Are we wiping down? I visited with some janitors from Dwight. You know, one, one of the, uh, schools that has not hit the two percent threshold. Don't really know what, uh, Mr. Farr and them are doing differently, but what the janitors told me was surprising. And it's a lot of work. I don't know if we have the labor to do that. Uh, the masks, I, I just, I'm, the two percent, the five days after, at what point are we going to say, you have signs and symptoms, go home, be fever free and come back when you're feeling well? That eliminates a lot of the backend work that's keeping us from actually progressing this generation of students. And then I, I think you answered my question on runny nose. I heard runny nose and i- if we're going to keep a kid home for runny nose, we just need to cancel school forever, but you said combination of, of things and not to nitpick your, uh,
That's exactly it. So many of them mimic other things and we know other things are going around.
Right. And so I just feel like we're on a cycle. Um, first it was masks to prevent the spread. Next it's vaccination. Uh, now it's double masking, triple masking. I saw last night at the basketball game, the three people that had it on. Um, at what point are we going to get out of the cycle of, listen, it is spreading. You know, let's do the things that we can and, and pray and hope that we can see us succeed, overcome, but man, this is, the next thing, what else is going to be the remedy to this virus? I mean, uh, we're going to believe it and go do it and we're still having this conversation in a year from now and these kids aren't progressing. You know, I just, the frustration of my kids at home virtually going back to school, gracious teachers. Some of these teachers are amazing and how they worked with them remotely and how they brought them in. And they had tests, you know, a couple of days back, like, at what point are we going to do better than this? And, and again, I appreciate, I know y'all have been working day, nights. I get it. And, and even the building folks, but I am, I'm really emotional that we're making decisions with masks and testing that are going to affect these kids worse by doing nothing now, twenty years from now.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any, who else would like to speak?
Well, talking about the plan, some of the wording on there is my suggestion that we change. So right there when it says if you have more than one COVID-related symptom, they have fever and chills together. You can have, to me, I don't, are those the same symptoms? Cause you can have a, you know, with those. I'm just, I know it's splitting hairs, but you know, there probably needs to be a comma instead of a slash. That's one suggestion I have, if everybody's in agreement with that.
Okay, all right. Go back. I'm, I'm the slow one up here. Make this crystal clear. What exactly are you saying you want changed?
So the second bullet point, under COVID signs and symptoms, if you have more than one COVID-related sign and symptom, it's got fever and chills. To me with a slash, that means like, that's considered one symptom. If you have fever and chill, or you can't, it's splitting hairs, I know, but it probably needs to be a comma instead of a slash.
That was just to keep common language with other entities.
So that's one thing I have.
Yeah. Is everybody good with that and a comma?
So, so we're still tracking, right? We're, this is to track. Who's going to, who's going to champion the tracking? The nurses?
I'm just asking about a word change for this.
I know, I'm adding to, I, I, I might say that why, why are we even tracking it?
Okay, this isn't for tracking. This is if I'm at home.
Well, you said the emails to track, right?
I'm talking about the second bullet point.
Yeah, I'm talking about the first one.
Okay.
I mean, the email is designed, what we're doing is we're trying to add a step for parents. If, okay, if, if my child is at home and has some of these symptoms, you know, you, they just, they may just not feel well that day. Okay? What you do is you call the COVID, I did that all the day today. You, you go to the email and you go and document with Brittany or Annie. And so if day two or day three, they are positive, then their day actually started one. So they're actually going to be out of school less days. That's what the email is for. And so that's going to make things easier for everybody. It also has for any parent that has concerns that says, okay, my child, this is going on, you know, you know, what I need to do? Do I need to bring them? You know, it's a simple, it's a You know, it's a simple, it's another place, it's not a tracking thing, it's for them to, it actually will be day zero, instead of her waiting two or three days, coming and then they're positive. Instead of being out of school two days, then starting, it would be day one.
Sure. I understand, but if.
The nurses from having so many phone calls, truthfully. That's what the email is for, to slow down those phone calls to the nurses.
And you don't think this is going to still, you're going to still have the phone calls to the nurses?
There are, but I can tell you it has slowed down.
So, if I ask to remove the testing, then you really don't need this, right? Because if you have a sign or symptom, you don't come to school. If you have combinations, we're not letting you come to school. It eliminates the workload of, I mean, if you're telling me you're taking, I know your workload and then these nurses, 150 was one of the return numbers I heard. It seems like we're not doing our nurses or our staff any better by trying to track when somebody has their first symptom. The health department can't even do it. I mean, I was the only one the health department called on.
Got it.
So.
All right. We'll come back to that in just a second, Jeremy. Holly, you have a four.
Well, I mean, did we get board consent for that word change to the comma instead of the hyphen or the slash?
I don't think anybody has a problem with the comma. Anybody have a problem with the comma? Okay. Comma passes.
Okay. So, I have another question. I have lots of questions. You know I'm going to have lots of questions. Okay, so, is this intended to replace that 2%, 10% criteria? And so, if it is, I have a really good question that I should have asked last time we did this plan. But how does the, this plan from the admin prevent quarantine and keep students in the classroom? Because that's our overall common goal. And our quarantine criteria from the state has three things. You're vaccinated, that determines if you have to quarantine. Everybody's in masks, that determines if you have to quarantine or if you've recently recovered from COVID. So, that's the three criteria to prevent quarantines. So, this is my question to the administration. How does this plan help us prevent quarantines and keep the students in the classroom?
Okay. If you look down there under possible close contacts, okay? We won't be going by the 2%, 10% rule, but if you're in contact, then you will have a choice, okay, of going home and quarantining or you test to stay. If you test to stay with no symptoms, you'll never be quarantined, okay?
Okay. So, testing is important to determine quarantines.
You know, that's a big assumption that parents could get their kids tested. Some don't want to do that and that's their choice. If they choose not to, then it would be quarantine. But if they want them to come to school, there won't be any, there won't be any quarantine until that parent chooses not to test. Or if you take out testing, then that's another, something you have to deal with.
Is it, is it true that that's a recommendation and not a criteria?
Well, there's a question I wanted to ask, semi-related to that. I still remember sitting up here for the first time, asking a lot of questions and the, we were told about recommendations from the state and I wanted to really clarify that because they weren't recommendations, they were mandates at the time. And this board could sit, not sit up here and really make any decisions. And I didn't want to act like they were our decisions and I wanted that clarified. So, now, what are we allowed to decide? What mandates, I want to differentiate what this board is allowed to decide. I think that's the first thing we need to clarify.
True. These are, we've been on Zoom meetings with the state, the CDC, these are recommendations. There is no law stating that we have to wear a mask, we don't have to wear a mask, we have to test, we don't have to test. There's no law that says that. These are recommendations from the CDC that we're asked to follow. Simple as that.
And Department Ed gets their recommendations from, I mean, yeah, Department Ed gets their recommendations from the health department and those are recommendations. The governors made it clear that it's school board decision, whatever we do.
Okay, so, just to further clarify, I like being real clear and I look at the extremes on anything. So, we could go from doing absolutely nothing and carrying on school as normal with leaving the load on everyone and carrying on all the way to shutting the schools down completely.
Yes.
And that's our decision.
Correct.
Okay.
Now, the Department of Health is going to follow those guidelines. So, your students that go to, through the Health Department, they're going to be given those guidelines of, those are the three things you don't quarantine from.
Other than AAA stuff that would follow along.
Yes.
Yeah, and the tests we do get for free as long as we follow through their test for state, test to stay program, and that is the five and five, the testing for so many days. And so, those tests do come to us free from the state.
That was my question. If we're in the test to stay program and getting the test for free, we were approved for the test to stay program, so, I mean, we would try to, I mean, if we were not going to do that, we'd have to get out of that. I mean.
We would have to purchase our own tests. Or be out.
All right. Holly, still a four.
Okay. So, I'm concerned with this 2%, 10% and getting rid of that threshold. Pope County is at a 27, what was it, 27.15% positivity? If you break down Pope County, it's all red and then the Russellville area is purple. So, we've gone beyond high to extreme. And that's just the ones that are getting tested. I've heard from plenty of people that they have symptoms, that, oh, I'm not going to go get tested. So, that's only the ones being reported. So, you know it's a lot higher than that. And I'm all for being proactive instead of reactive. That's where my concerns. I don't think it's wise to get rid of that 2%, 10% threshold. We haven't even given it a chance to fully, you know, run the three weeks that they're supposed to be in masks for our schools and yet here we are, you know, trying to get rid of stuff.
Got it. Thank you, Holly.
Under this plan, the 2%, 10% rule goes out, okay?
Yeah, as it is, correct. Yeah. Holly, anymore?
So, I will say, you know, with the mask, that's what's recommended by, like Mr. Vining said, that's the CDC, that's the ADE, the ADH, that is our epidemiologist, our disease specialist. That's one of our tools in our toolbox. It's one of our strategies. And just because something is hard, it's like, if you've got a sports game and you've got a very difficult opponent, you're going to pull out all the tools in your toolbox, you're going to use every bit of strategy you can to overcome that opponent. So, having mask is one of those tools that we don't need to let go of when we can have it available. So, that's where my concern is.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Morgan?
I've just got some questions. And I'm sure it'll lead to probably some further discussion. And they're pretty generic. And, you know, there's going to be a lot of difference of opinions up here and throughout the room and I'd hope that, you know, any questions don't, they don't necessarily indicate anyone's position. It's information and questions I've been asked that I think this is an opportunity to clarify. One of them is, why are we treating this different than the flu? You know, at the beginning, there was a lot of unknowns. We've had quite a bit of time to track this. I say we, I mean, it's not we, it's y'all and everyone else that does that. But, you know, our flu limitations were around 20% whenever we said, you know, we probably need to do something. The, so, why are we treating this different than the flu? Does anyone know?
Well, I can tell you that our State Department is telling us we're in a pandemic, so we're trying to follow guidelines there. That's really it. I mean, you are correct. When we had the flu, if we reached a certain amount, then, you know, we did what we needed to do, so.
Yeah.
That's not a great answer, but that's the only answer that I, you know, that I can give you.
Got it.
We have some resources that we didn't have with the flu. And then when you look at it, if I had flu tests and had the opportunity, I would probably do those tests as well, if that makes sense. I think it's just the information and what we're given right now on COVID. And it's spreading so fast. I'm not saying flu doesn't, but.
I think the, one of the concerns is the impact on children. I think we have a lot of history now over the past year and a half, two years. And the last data I saw, it was 0.00%. So, depending on which statistics you look at, is the impact on, on school-aged children, which the flu was higher.
Are you talking about death?
Yes. So, I mean, that was just one of the questions I've got, why, you know, why are we treating this different than the flu? And to follow it up, can anyone quantify the benefit of anything that's been done in the schools? All the requirements that have been done here nationwide, can, is there any data on the benefit of that? There's been a lot of data on the negative impacts. Boy, it got quiet. Okay, I'll move on to the next one. Well, I'll wait. I'll let someone else go.
Ms. Lynn, Mr. White, Mr. Jackamore, anybody have anything else?
I just want to say, I like the idea that we have the opportunity to test students here because it's very difficult to get a test right now. The resources out there to get tests is hard, so have that opportunity here and that gives parents and students some information if they need to make the decision, they need for their students' health. So, I'm certainly glad that we have those resources.
I can tell you just one statistic. We've had eight kids today test positive that were in the test to stay program that we were able to find. And most were asymptomatic, but what we're finding is day two or three, they end up with symptoms. So, they may start asymptomatic on Tuesday, but by Thursday, they have symptoms. And we've caught them a little early to get them out of the school.
Well, I just want to make a state, make a statement on the way I feel. I want it to be the decision between the parent and the child and their doctor, if they should wear a mask or get tested. If my child, which I don't have one in school at this time, if they're quarantined, but they are fine and healthy, I want them to stay in school. And with this, if I wanted my child to get tested, then I have that option. If I don't, they continue to go to school until they have one of these symptoms. And that would allow them to then to test or stay at home. But I want that choice. And I just, I've done a lot of studies, I've read a lot of things about the mask. I don't believe that it helps. I've known a lot of people, my friends, and I talked to a lot of schools around this area and they've been vaccinated, they've had boosters, they wear masks because their job requires it, they've got COVID. And they want them just almost, they had a transfusion due to it. So, it's up to you. And me not wearing my mask is not going to affect you in any way if you keep your three foot distance and wash your hands. And like Jeremy was saying, foggy machines and wiping down. I mean, when I was at work and it was running rampant, we did it twice a day in our work. My secretary did it once and when I left that day, I sprayed off all the offices down and wiped the door knops down. And it kept it out of our office most of the time until this second batch went through. So, to me, cleaning your hands and keeping your hands off your face and eyes, that's the old way of doing things and it helps. That is proven. Well, that's all I have.
If we could keep three feet of distance, that might be something, but we're not keeping three feet of distance between the students. So, we've got to use every tool we can.
And that kind of leads into one of my questions on the AMI days that's proposed as part of this plan. You know, there's a lot of, and everyone knows this, I'm just kind of leading into something, but the school-aged children, I mean, they're not getting this all at school. So, and I understand we're calling it a five-day, you know, being off for five days is part of that. But what we're doing is we're sending them home and a large part of them are going to wind up piled up at my house. And they're going to be, you know, a whole, they're going to be in a whole lot closer contact, probably with other people at home than in school. And so, I'm just kind of questioning the AMI days. And along with that, I think I heard that there's a robotics thing Saturday, there's probably other athletic events. Those, we're not part of, I mean, we're carrying on with those, we're not canceling those?
Not canceling.
I don't know. That's, if we really wanted to address it and say, okay, this five days is actually going to do some good, it seems like we'd cancel everything. I don't know that the five days is going to do any good considering what the kids will be doing over this time. I know they're in a different environment in school, but, you know, there's a lot of different avenues for them to catch COVID. Just because we're saying this is five days and they're going to come back and no one's going to have, that's not going to happen at all. I don't think, I don't think that's what we're saying, but I think some people may be interpreting it that way. So, I guess my questions are, do we really need to do the two days of AMI? And if we do, why are we not just going ahead and canceling all activities?
Okay, the two days of AMI was strongly recommended by our nurses. We met with them this morning, talking over, you know, this plan and what they could feel and feel better about and support. And this was one of the things that they advocated for was the two days, Thursday and Friday. It gives us five days, it gives them five days because again, we got the five and five CDC guideline rule. That fit into that, those five days. So, that's the reason why we decided to put this in our plan. I don't mean to, I wanted to cover one thing before I forget. In our custodial, you guys have asked a lot of questions about what are we doing? I mean, we do fog every night, every building is fogged. These maintenance and custodial workers are working around the clock. You just don't understand how many hours they're putting in. We have plenty of PPE, we have plenty of things that we need and we are doing those things. We have custodial workers that are constantly during the day wiping down areas that need to be wiped down. So, if you walked into a school, you wouldn't be able to talk to a custodial worker because they're head down, wiping things down, making sure that everything is as safe as possible. So, we, you know, credit to Chris Campbell and Tom Fowler and their group, they have gone overboard to try to make our buildings as safe as possible. So, I just wanted to make sure you understood that and the things that we're doing to try to protect our kids.
I just have one last comment and then I have just a question or a request from parents. So, every one of us up here has different kinds of backgrounds. So, my background is biology. And so, I've taught about diseases and disease transmission, mutations, viruses, all this for well over a decade. So, the point that Morgan brought up about the low death rate, that's fantastic. However, one of the huge goals in trying to get back to normal in the pandemic and, you know, prevent disease is we don't want people to get sick. I mean, that's the bottom line. Everybody that's infected with that virus, it replicates in the cells. The cells don't have a checks and balance system to prevent mutations in that viral DNA. And that's why we have Omicron and Delta and all these different variants is because they've had a chance to mutate. So, again, I'd rather be proactive and prevent anybody from getting sick. And again, that goes back to like what Don said, what Jeremy said with all like the sanitation, with the social distancing, masking is part of that. These are all the guidelines by our disease experts globally that recommend this helps prevent the disease and stop the disease. So, that's my last comment on that. And then I did have a request from parents with this plan. Can you continue to post the number of positives and the number in quarantine? So, we have some kind of data collection. This is what Morgan was saying, you know, how do we know this is working versus this is working? So, can we please continue to collect data and post that data for parents? That's a parent request.
I would imagine. The answer is yes. No, I want to answer Morgan's about the stay at home, you know, two days. The answer, the answer is yes. No, I answered Morgan's about the stay at home, you know, two, two days. Uh, as far, as far back, not as soon back as yesterday, you know, I was telling our principals that I don't, I don't want to do this until we couldn't, we actually couldn't have school safely for either, we didn't have enough teachers or staff. Uh, but when we started going into this change in the program, this allows, you know, the numbers of kids, everybody that we have in COVID protocol right now, it would go out Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. Every kid that we have, which is, I can't remember now how many kids that is, but, you know, it's hundreds of kids. Then come Tuesday morning, when we come back to school, all those kids would be out of that protocol. And we'd be able to start whatever you do tonight, free and clear. That would, that's, that's sort of part of the basis of that.
Okay. Um, what, what about athletics and other activities? Why are we not canceling those? As part of the AMI, if we, if the AMI is going?
You, you can do that, okay? But as a general rule, in the past, you have not done that when you've had AMI days.
Okay. So I'll, I'll go ahead and get to, uh, a motion. Um, I would like to see us not do the AMI days and, uh, also take out the five days with masks. Brittany, I don't know if you-
I have one more comment before we vote on that. I am not a nurse or a doctor. I, I taught math, so you know I've got limited ability. But, um, we did talk with the nurses and I have a sheet of paper here with the people that recommended this. There were like nine of them. And there was one that was against it because she wanted to just keep the mask going. So, you know, I'm going to have to support the medical people because again, I taught math. So, um, it makes sense to me to go with what the nurses say.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. I've got a motion on the-
Can I ask another question, please?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, Brittany, I don't know if we know the answer to this, but I know we're talking to doctors and things. So a kid tests positive. Do they go to the doctors? First question. If they test positive, do the kids that are going home because they're positive, are, are they going to the doctor at all?
That's family choice. We don't really get an update on most of the kids.
So what, when the kid goes to the doctor, if he does, or she, what are the doctors prescribing? Do what? Are the doctors prescribing, oh, I thought, are, are the doctors prescribing anything to help them get over the signs and symptoms of COVID-19?
I don't have an answer. I haven't heard anything or seen anything.
I don't believe they are. I think they're letting it run its course and, and hope for the best. And if they're dehydrated or things come up, they're getting them to night, to, to emergency room. So, um, I don't know that we don't need to just step away and let, you know, if you're sick, stay home. If you're, um, not come to school. If you're a teacher or staff, that might help our numbers if there's healthy teachers at home because of close contact and not positive, keeping them in the workplace. And I believe CDC came out with that. I don't want to be quoted on it, but the reason for the five and five is to get the pilot back in the seat, to get the flight attendant back on the plane, to get you driving a truck. And so again, here, here we are, not to make light of the close situations that have resulted in death that I work with and I'm around, but, um, these kids are not getting any antibiotics or steroids for the most part to keep them in school or get them in school faster to get them over their symptoms. They're working through it.
You know, I would say they are getting, when I'm seeing prescriptions come in now, not with every nurse every day, so take that with work with. It's after events of what's happening after pneumonia and things like that.
And antibiotics don't work on viruses.
Yeah, you know, and that's why I was trying to generically kind of round that up into, has anyone quantified the benefits of any actions taken? I, I haven't seen anything. And I appreciate what you said about, uh, the, the reasons behind it, but I haven't seen that quantified anywhere of any actions that's been taken. And my wife's a nurse and she's going to probably beat me over the head when I get home. Um, but that's a different environment. I mean, nurses, doctors, they're in a different environment. They know what they're doing. They're wearing the appropriate mask and it's fitted properly and it does work. I mean, what these kids are doing in school, uh, mi- minimal if any, as far as the mask. And half of them are wearing them wrong anyway. So, you know, again, with that said, I made a couple of things. I don't know if we need to break those up just to get moving and get a consensus on some of these items that are probably controversial or there may be difference of opinions on. So I'd like to, you know, go ahead and knock those two out, one way or another. I don't anticipate they'll pass, but let's address them.
Well, let's, let's, let me clarify. So your, your motion is to accept this, except for no AMI days, AMI days, excuse me, and then take out the five days that the kids have to wear masks after coming back from-
Well, let's just not necessarily adopt it, but let's address one of the time if we're going to do the AMI or not. And then if we want to do the additional five days of, of mask or not. Because what I heard is everything's recommendations. Everything's put on this board.
Correct.
And it's our decision. We can gather the information that's been provided to us, the recommendations, uh, at every level. But ultimately it's our decision. So I'd like to address, you know, if we need to go bullet by bullet and get a consensus, let's go, let's get it done.
Okay. I need you to clarify something. I, I'm, I'm okay with what you recommended. But right now we have hundreds of kids that are in COVID protocol in some form or fashion, okay? The, the, the idea of going to AMI day wipes all that out and we start over Tuesday. If you change something tonight that doesn't include AMI, you need to also address where are we with all those other kids? How, I mean, you know-
Be the five day, if we adopt this, it would be a five day quarantine, right?
So we would have, we go back to those, I'm just, I'm just saying I want to address it.
Yeah. I, I mean, if this is ultimately adopted with those changes, I would think we would follow this at that point. And you'd have to back up and it would be a five day quarantine and nothing after that. But I'm, 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 again, this is, uh, fairly new information.
Yeah.
So we're kind of-
Correct.
Studying as we go right here.
I, I, I just wanted to, because that, that complicates, and, and we can handle it, but what do we do with all those kids tomorrow or the next day? That's where we can say, okay, we can forgive them or we can, you have a right to do whatever.
I have a, I have a question too, just if you can clarify. So are you proposing that we vote on this bullet item by bullet item? Or we're going to make all the changes that we want to make or vote on to make and then vote on this as a whole? So what's the plan?
I thought we were going to address it item by item, like your comma. I mean, that was one part of it. Uh, so these other two items, we can address them separately. And then once we have a consensus on the entire document, then we can go forward one, one way or another.
Just because I have an addendum to the document that I would like, I, so I just don't want to not have the opportunity to put that in.
No, no, no. I'm not going to make, I don't want to make a motion to adopt it with those. So let's break it up individually.
Let's hit the high, yeah, I agree. Okay. So motion on the floor right this second is, Mr. Barrett made a motion uh, to not adopt the two AMI days for Thursday and Friday. I don't know how long I need to wait for a second, but-
There's no second.
Okay.
Could I make a motion?
Well, this, okay, just-
A motion is standing.
You go ahead.
I'm going to say, Morgan, your motion did not give a second.
Right.
Okay. All right, Mr. White, floor's yours.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this proposal as presented.
I have a motion on the floor by Mr. White to accept this proposal as presented.
Point of order. I had a previous motion that, you know, that I'd stated, and I don't know if we can, but I did have a motion-
Yeah, I was seconding it.
Before that.
Say it again.
I was second, I was going to second it. I needed to, I'm always delayed on my seconds. I don't know if there's a time.
Okay. So let's step back in, in time for about three minutes here. This is going to be a fun one, I can already tell. So Morgan, Mr. Barrett has a motion on the floor to note for no AMI days for Thursday and Friday of this week.
Second.
I have a second by Keister on no AMI days for Thursday and Friday. Any more discussion on that particular motion? Okay. We're going to go to a vote. Ms. Hall?
No.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Ms. Lynn?
No.
I am a no. Mr. Keister?
Yes.
Mr. Jackamore?
Yes.
Okay. So one, two, three. So it's four to three, correct?
Four, three for-
For no, for keeping AMI days.
Yeah, motion fails. So just ignore it.
Okay.
And then the second part of that was addressing the-
So we're keeping the AMI days?
We're keeping AMI days.
Unless there's another subsequent motion.
Right now, we're keeping AMI days.
So the other motion that was previously stated was related to the five days of masking after the five days of quarantine.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor to remove the five days that the child will have to wear masks after coming back from a positive quarantine.
Second.
Okay. And I'm not, again, are you saying isolated when positive and when contact?
Yeah.
Both those times? I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
What you're saying. Okay.
I have a motion by Mr. Barrett and a second by somebody over here.
Jeremy.
Second by Mr. Keister. Any more discussion on bullet point number two? Morgan, does yours include the bottom, if a student or staff member tests negative, they remain at school and wear masks throughout their identified period time?
Every word that it said, I was implying every word that it said, five days of masking after a quarantine. Or after that period.
Yeah, this is open discussion.
Just-
I do want to add, I do want to add some information about the AAA. If, if we don't follow AAA guidelines and, uh, it, it'll wind up and be a forfeit for our game. So we need to keep that in mind.
Yeah, that, that doesn't supersede, I wouldn't think that would supersede AAA.
Gotcha.
But there's a mask on here. We're X-ing, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I second it.
I have a motion by Mr. Barrett to remove the mask and a second by Keister. Any more discussion? Okay. Here we go again. Ms. Holly?
No.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Ms. Lynn?
No.
I'm a yes.
I'm a yes.
Keister, yes? Mr. Jackamore?
Yes.
Okay. That motion passes as it is right this second. No mask. And we still keep the AMI days, correct?
Judy's doing this, changing this as we go, okay? And when we get through, she'll read it and make sure it's what we agreed on.
Yeah, I know, but I've got to, I've got to write this down to keep my 14th motion.
I'm just letting the board know. She's keeping up with it. And when, when you're all done, we'll have one document that she'll read and make sure, or put it up on the board or whatever, where everybody knows that we're doing what we say, which, what we voted on.
Can I add an addendum to this?
Or you could just add another-
Or ask, you know, for another one. So I would like to keep the two percent, 10% criteria with the 21 day mask mandate if we go over those thresholds.
No. We were recommending going with the CDC. If we stayed two to 10, we were recommending coming to 10 days like everybody else is doing.
Right now it's 21.
Right now it's 21. We were beside, before this, we were, I think it's in the-
So the two percent, 10% threshold with the 10 days according to the CDC?
No, that's what we were, we were gun, we were going to ask for previous to all this, okay? Right, Brittany?
To clarify, before this document, you know, we were doing the two, two percent, 10% for 21 days if we reached those thresholds. What we were going to present, present before this was let's pull that back to 10 days instead of 21 days.
To be in compliance with CDC?
Correct. That's what we were going to do.
So that's what I would like to request, that we keep that two percent, 10% thresh- threshold with those CDC guidelines.
Is, is, just a point of order. Is that going to be in conflict with the previously approved motion?
I believe so.
So it'd be an improper motion unless you can reword it somehow.
So, hey, Jason, just, or Andrew, to clarify on the AMI days, um, so are the teachers in school or are they AMI? Are they from the house or wherever they want to be?
They're at school.
At school. Thank you.
Okay. In another life, I made somebody mad to be president during this time, so I'm, sweet lamb. Okay. Um, all right. So Mr. Barrett? I'm, I'm not the in and out of Robert's Rules of Order. So you're saying because her motion contradicted with the motion already made, uh-
Already made and approved.
And made and approved, okay. Ms. Hall, do you understand that?
Yeah, I'm just trying to think about it for just a second.
Yeah, let's think that out and make sure we're-
Okay. We should have a mask.
I guess we could vote on it, but I don't know where it's going to go.
Well, this is talking about individual students is what this plan is, is saying. And what I'm proposing is a schoolwide or a building wide. So it's supersede an individual, you know, and it's kind of what we had before when we're getting mask optional. But then if we exceeded those two percent, 10%, then to be precaution and being proactive and preventing the spread of disease of being proactive to try to keep the students in the classroom and prevent quarantines, that's what we went with. So.
Unfortunately, I think Morgan's that just passed, he, we, we took out everything in yellow on this sheet that says no, no mask, correct?
Yeah, I think to, to, Holly is, it would be an addendum in my opinion because you're not doing anything on what the motion we just, that just passed. You're asking for a corporate, um, which we talked about a flu. The flu get to an X percent. I don't know if that's in stone or if that's just understood. It, it's not in stone. So it, but to your answer your question, I think it'd be an addendum. You would make a motion to-
So no mask until X is what I'm hearing you say?
Yeah, and it's not affecting the individual, you know, with what your plan is right now, but if we reach that threshold, again, just to be proactive, a 10 day mask mandate, if that's in what's compliance with the CDC guidelines, I think that would be a good precaution, you know?
Now, the mask-
On a building level, you know?
Sorry for interrupting. I think the masks are covered. If it was no mask, I think what you're talking about corporately, like in the flu situation, which it's not a policy, but it's understood if it gets to a point where we feel like we need to, like Center Valley one year had to go home. They cleaned the school and then everybody was back at a certain time. So, but I think that would be something we don't have. And, but as far as masks go, I think that was covered in the last motion. That's my opinion, so.
I think I agree with that.
I think we could vote on it. I mean, I'm sitting here thinking about it more and more.
I want to do it right, so if-
We could go ahead and vote on it, see where it went and then address it because it, it actually, it may override the previous motion if it gets approved.
Because it won't affect the individual.
I mean, we're changing everything, so that motion would be after the, after the previous one and so we'd somehow modify it. Or try to blend them.
I'm not sure I understand it. That, is that part of this?
She's wanting to add it.
I'm wanting to add it.
Wanting to add what? What exactly?
To the two percent, 10% criteria that we've been doing.
Right.
With a 10 day mask mandate if we, for building, if we hit those criteria.
Currently though, we're not doing to, this right here does not have 10%, 2%. That's going out the door. Is that correct?
She, she wants to add that back.
I'm asking to add that back. So we have some criteria to hold accountable to.
Which right now, everybody except White can do. Isn't that correct?
I got it. I got it. I got it. Okay. So re, restate your, restate your motion so I can-
Okay. I would like to make a motion to keep the two percent, 10% threshold with a 10 day mask mandate. If we cross that threshold at, at an individual building as per CDC guidelines.
Okay. I have a question, of course. So what happens at the end of that 10 days if they didn't go below the two percent?
I guess we'd have to reevaluate. That's what the administration was saying for this time.
What a rule is now is if, when we get to the, the right this minute, it's 21 days.
Right.
Okay? But if, for right now, they get to 21 and they're not under, then they stay in mask until they are under, okay? And so that would most likely be the way you would do it, okay?
Motion on the floor to keep the two percent, 10% threshold with a 10 day mask mandate per CDC guidelines. Fair?
Mm-hmm.
I have a motion by Ms. Hall. This is awkward.
I think I'll second it.
Okay, I have a second by Ms. Nguyen and a motion by Ms. Hall. Any more discussion?
On that 2%, what is that? I mean, how long would you wear a mask for?
Uh, no, it's, I mean-
2%?
Wouldn't you explain it? It's what we're doing right now, okay? I mean, not right this minute, but it's what the policy is.
Well, it was.
It's broken down by building, and it's 2% of your entire building population, so staff and students positive, or 10% of that population quarantined. It's one or the other, you don't have to have both to hit that right now.
And that means ever, when you hit that, then all students, staff, and everybody is mandatory mask.
For how long?
10 days.
Those 10 days.
10 days, okay.
Yeah, and that's, that's-
So, again, the 2% is not a requirement. The second thing is, are we going to quarantine a kid that does not have signs and symptoms? Part of the masking is if two have it and are wearing it correctly and are at a certain distance for less than a timeframe, they don't quarantine the one that's not positive. So the nurses are, I mean, this, I mean, the nurses are going to have work, right? Because they're going to quarantine these people that are close contacts, right? Or are we not going to quarantine somebody that's healthy?
I think that, I think what happens is, is that right now, if this were to pass, okay, then when we get down here to possible close contacts, that would be another way how you're going to quarantine.
Right.
Okay?
Okay, so the 2% is something we made up, right? It's not something CDC gave us.
Absolutely, when we were doing test to stay, we had the choice as a district in which our team and others, a lot of people, got together and we came up with what we thought was a number at the time. And 2% and 10% was what we came up with.
So to clarify, that's something we came up with, that's not something that came down from the state?
Yeah, it's doctor, scientist, me, okay, I'll take the blame for that. Actually, there was a lot of other people came up with it, but it's my responsibility.
Who's making the statement that, you know, that came down, it's, we made that up?
What actually happened is we came up with the, our policy, what we wanted test to stay to be.
Right.
And then, in effect, that's what ended up being the state guidelines for test to stay program.
Any more discussion? Okay, I have a motion on the floor, my Ms. Hall, to keep 2% 10% threshold with a 10-day mask mandate per CDC guidelines, and a second by Ms. Nguyen. Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Barrett?
No.
Mr. White?
No.
Ms. Nguyen?
Yes.
I'm a no. Mr. Keister?
No.
Mr. Jackamore?
No.
That did not pass.
Just, just to be clear on that motion that did pass earlier, I don't want, I don't intend for anything that, action we take to prevent anyone from wearing a mask. I mean, it's not saying you can't, so I just-
Recommended.
All right. Whether it's students, student, staff, whatever.
I think it's, you can recommend mask, and then that is a personal decision between the parent, the child, and the staff.
Okay.
Or whatever, you know, maybe that's how you want to word it, if you don't want to recommend whatever, how you want to do that.
So as it is right now, let me make sure I'm following this in live here. This right here is exactly how you wrote it, except for mask. After all the circles we just did, the only thing that's changed is the mask, right? So, okay.
Do you have it up here? Okay.
Okay. Good discussion, we're getting somewhere. All right, any more discussion on, on this document? I think the only major thing, Morgan, that we have not discussed is we have AMI days, what are we doing on extracurricular activities that are scheduled through this weekend? And I cannot make a motion one way or the other. I will go back and say, the document in front of us, just to remind everybody, we have pretty much everybody in this room that's sitting out there in the chairs that run a building, do support AMI, and for the most part, support everything on this piece of paper, so just keep that in mind as we're talking, so.
Okay, I have a question then, so, for example, if a student or staff tests positive, they will be isolated for five days, that's still in there. Then they can return to school for six through 10, but they don't have to wear a mask. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And if we don't approve this plan, we stick to the one that we already have, correct? The 2% 10% that we're doing right now?
Except for, from 21 days down to 10.
Yeah, okay.
I think I'm-
Do we need to approve this plan with the exception of in the yellow?
That's correct.
And actually vote on it?
That's correct.
I'd like to make that motion.
Mr. White has made the mo-
I'd like to approve this plan with the exception of the change we made of the, you know, not wearing a mask in the yellow part, you know, we, we voted to eliminate that, otherwise I suppose we accept the rest of this proposal.
Can I make a second?
Not yet. What?
Did you second?
Oh, I'll second it.
Okay, I just, I got a question and clarification, I'm all with you, I just want to make sure in the details, okay? So, right now, there's no mask after those five days, so when we say somebody's positive, however we do it, they can get it from the health department, or they can get it from our testing, and they're positive, they stay out five days, then they come back to school. I just want to make sure we're all together. Now, on quarantine or close contact, are we, we gonna, they can opt out and quarantine for those five days and then come back to school, or they can test to stay those five days and do it? I'm just making sure everybody's together.
And that's if they have the signs and symptoms, correct?
Well, I'm, I'm just saying if they're, that's what I want you to spell out, okay?
Yeah, I, I would prefer if there's a close contact when they trace, if they do not have signs and symptoms, they stay in school.
Okay, you would have to ask him to-
That's what I'm saying, Mr. White.
That's what I'm asking, Mr. White.
Yes, I couldn't leave with that.
So when they're, when they're positive and they're out for five days, they have to have a negative test to come back at the end of that five days, right?
That's correct. No, 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 I have to wait this five days.
Either no symptoms.
No symptoms or five days.
But that, but you are thinking, right, used to, you had to get a negative test at seven, I think, to enter back in to the school.
Right, and right now, they would be either going home, or we would be testing them at one, three, five, or one, two, three, four, five.
All right, so this document-
So I just want to clarify, and I don't care how you do it.
Right, okay, so, I mean, we're looking at a, basically a one-page document, after that, it's, that cannot possibly outline all the effort and work that's done by everyone. And, and that's one of the things there that's not spelled out, that I thought was still in place, is that it's a negative test to return to school.
Okay, so in other words, you would want, if, if they were close contact, they can either-
No, where it's positive.
Where it's positive, right, so you think that, oh, wait.
No.
I mean, we're doing the testing, they can, I mean, they can test, and if they test negative, they can come back to school with no mask, right?
That's correct.
That's what I was thinking was the-
All I'm doing is I want to make sure that when we send this out to the public tomorrow, we don't have to change our mind, okay, I mean, so.
Do we need to do something to incorporate that in there, or is that part of what's currently done?
Yeah, I'm trying to ride as fast as everybody's talking, so it's-
Yeah, some, some people are testing posi, some people are testing positive for up to 12 weeks.
Start over, Morgan.
So that's-
So what you're saying is that if somebody tests positive, they go home, five days later, regardless, they can come back?
As long as their symptoms are improving and they don't have a fever, they haven't had a fever for over 24 hours without fever-reducing medicine.
But they could be coughing or whatever.
Yeah, the cough is lasting, yeah, for so long.
So the exposure, the testing negative was on exposure?
Ye, yes, sir, that's for-
Not, not a positive?
Yes, sir, that's for close contact.
Okay, so as far as our nurses are concerned, we could test somebody to see if they're positive, okay, originally, and then if they, you know, if they wanted us to, or we could test them the five days that they need to quarantine.
Gotcha.
In order to come back, but at day five, if they're showing no symptoms, they come back, okay, is, we got, is that what we're saying? I'm just want to make sure, okay?
So, so to clarify what Mr. White, I asked him to add, or, was if, if there's a positive case, we're not going to go trace them down unless somebody has signs and symptoms, they're going to stay in school. If they're healthy, they're staying in school, if they got signs and symptoms, then, then the close contact comes into effect and they're quarantined for the five days. It keeps healthy kids in the building and teachers.
Yes. Okay, Mr. White, back to your motion, can you accept what Keister said as the addendum?
I can.
Okay, so right now, we have a motion on the floor to accept this document, except for the mask language. And then Jeremy, what is the basics of your addendum?
Basically, you could scratch out possible close contacts. I mean, you got a positive symptomatic student.
Okay, well, help me-
And yes, you can trace to see if there's other symptoms, maybe a letter, hey, this classroom's had some spread, ask your student to stay home if they've got a headache, sniffly nose, cough, sore throat, shoot some communication out there, don't trace it, and then if they're sick, stay home. If they're healthy, they go to class.
Okay, I've got to somehow put that into a motion.
So, but you're eliminating that last column.
That's correct.
This. Right?
No test to stay, we, we-
No test to stay.
If they want to-
So is there not anything to do with test to stay then anymore?
It's up there, I mean, it's-
I mean, is there a test to stay program at that point?
We, we, that's what I was saying about the letters, if, if we contact them through letter or phone call that, hey, this classroom's had four positive cases, just want to let you know if your kid's come up with a headache or, but keeping up with multiple spreadsheets doesn't, it just seems cumbersome.
Okay, I'm vehemently opposed to getting rid of test to stay because you can have somebody that's COVID-positive that's shedding the disease and they're asymptomatic, and that's the benefit of this test to stay program is helping to identify who's positive for COVID, so we can quarantine them while they are shedding that disease, whether they have symptoms or not.
My kid tested to stay every day I was positive, my wife was positive, one of my kids never tested positive.
That's great, but he did the test for saying he got to stay in school, right?
Right, but-
Okay, but if he had tested-
Our nurses are testing-
If you didn't know that and he was positive, he could have been shedding that virus, whether he got sick or not, he could be spreading it to others, and that impacts other students' ability to stay in the classroom, and that's our goal, is to get kids in the classroom.
If we do away with the test to stay, they would have to do the five days of quarantine, right?
I'm, I'm not for doing away with the test to stay. That's not a part of, part of the motion.
So-
So-
No, 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 so Mr. White's motion on the floor, as it is right now, he did not approve Jeremy's addendum, is motion to approve the current RSD guidelines as stated, except for the no mask language. So I have a motion by Mr. White. A second by Mr. Keister and a motion by Mr. White. Any more discussion? Okay. Ms. Hall?
No.
Mr. Barrett?
No.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Nguyen?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Yes.
Mr. Jackamore?
Yes.
Motion passes. I think so, are we done talking about COVID?
What, what I'd like to do is that the policy's back here behind you, if you want to look at it and make darn sure it's what you, it's up here on the board, you want to make sure, because Chrissy and, and Rachel are fixing to go do that. So basically tomorrow, we will be in school.
It's updating as we're speaking.
Just like we are today, same rules, same, same mask mandate tomorrow, unless you change that, and then Thursday and Friday, we will be out of school, Monday will be Martin Luther King Day, I mean, Monday, we will come back Tuesday under this policy, and Chrissy and Rachel will get that out tonight at some point, okay? To staff and everyone, okay?
No, not, not, I can't, can you, from here on, it'll go pretty quick, can you just hang around just a second? I haven't opened it up to the floor to the public, and we weren't planning on doing that tonight, just for the sake of time, and we've, as much as I hate to do that. Uh, I'm not a nurse, help me with that, somebody help me with it. That's correct. That's correct, that's how the test to stay program works, am I correct? That's correct, ma'am.
I'm sorry, Jay, I mean, we're, I mean, they could test positive up to 12 weeks, is that right, the, I mean, that's, I mean, that's, I mean, that's coming from your smart individuals, so they could be spreading, I mean, is it, we're sending kids to school because they're vaccinated, is that the real, I mean, at what point, they could test five and already been infectious or, not infectious, infected or infecting others, like, our nurse, I mean, go look at the spreadsheets, look how many spreadsheets we're tracking people, and the health- Motion's over, so I guess it is over.
Yeah, I believe that's how test to stay works, right? Are all the people smarter than me, is that how test to stay works? Yes, that's how test to stay works.
We're, we have upgraded with CDC guidelines already of what kind of contact tracing we're doing, okay? Now, it's, it's a lot less extensive than what we did in the past, you know, it's basically, you know, who have you been around and, and who've been extended contact, and so it's a lot less than what we have, than what's been in the past. That's why I asked that question, because I wanted it clarified.
Okay, moving on to, where are we at, number six, RHS band report from the Carnegie Hall trip in December, Mr. Dwayne Dove.
All right, I told Mr. Dove he was the bright light in tonight's show, so I told him, don't let us down, okay?
Well, I'm going to try not to start with, I would like to say thank you to you, the school board, our administrators, and our parents for supporting and allowing our trip to happen. I would like to publicly thank Dr. Tim Johnson, Dr. Christie Jutan, Julie Scott, and the staff from Millard Henry for their help in our COVID testing, Erin Heinzon, Amanda Johnson, and our band boosters for all they did to see that our trip took place. They say that a picture is worth a thousand words, and so I asked that you watch the PowerPoint presentation because it speaks much better than I do. I will still talk and cover things, but I think you can gain more by viewing the pictures. The presentation is broken down by day, starting with the Sunday, which is where everybody had to have a negative RT PCR test, and then we took off from there on the Monday. One of the big things that happened on Monday, that this will be coming up for you, is we had several students, like close to 50 of them, who had never been on a plane before, and so the very first time, you see them all on there, the very first time they took off on a plane, it was like the first time they'd ever been on a roller coaster, I mean, you hear them go, whoa! And so it's, there's really a neat effect from it, for what they did. The students, and this will be coming up here soon, students love seeing the Christmas tree at Rockefeller Center and walking through Times Square, but I'm not sure if Monday, everybody even knew that they were in Times Square when we were going- when we were going through it. And I'll let you see it in some of the pictures that gets there. This is actually us in LaGuardia. Uh, here's us at, uh, as in where we're landing in LaGuardia, this is our hotel, Park Central, which is right across the street from Carnegie Hall. This is our walk down to Hard Rock Cafe, um, which is where we ate our evening meal on that Monday. And as I said, they really enjoyed the, uh, the Christmas tree, and of course, I wish if these lights were dimmer, you'd be able to see these a whole lot brighter, 'cause it is really bright. One of the things my wife asked was, would the Christmas tree at Rockefeller Center really have enough lights? And when we got there, she said, okay, this is the first Christmas tree I've ever seen that had enough lights. There was a light display that took place at Saks Fifth. And this is fixing to lead us up to, um, right, right after this, is in our next day, is in, we're, we're coming up with soon on day two. And on day two, they had to get up at 5:30 in the morning so that we could get ready for rehearsal. And, um, as we were getting ready for that rehearsal, they, um, had several of them that were sitting in their chairs asleep. And so, I got, got them up and we did calisthetics to sort of wake them up with the understanding that if I saw someone go asleep in a chair again, they were gonna get to go out and run around blocks. It's at a New York block, and so, uh, that was much better. That's us actually walking back to hotel that night, and that's Carnegie Hall, right across the street from the hotel. This is, like I said, day two. Premier Deli is our new favorite place to eat, 'cause we eat a lot of meals there while we were there. This is the deli. This is us at our rehearsal venue for the Tuesday morning. This is at Manhattan Manor, um, and it's a, the kids were actually, they were fascinated by the, the place, but it's, it's a, a, a place where it's a, it's a venue for different things. Like, the night before, there had been a wedding reception, and so, this is where we set up and rehearsed for that day. This is them doing their stretches, we had to get them wake up. And this is us moving back. One of the things I've been fascinated by is we always have little bitty girls play tuba, and those are big or huge cases. We could stick them inside the case if they needed to. This is at Top of the Rock at Rockefeller Plaza. First thing you do when you go in is you get to have your pictures taken like this, and then you get an opportunity to go out and view what New York looks like at, um, the first, I think your first stop is, um, uh, floor 63 or 73, I forgot which, but you have a few more flights to go. I think the first one is 63, and then you keep getting to go on up. And I remember between the last two, I think it's like 74 and 75, I didn't think there'd be that much difference, but there is really a difference in the one flight, that's what it'll actually do for you. We went from there, this is the ferry to take us to, um, Liberty Island and see the Statue of Liberty. This was a highlight to a lot of our students. However, we did learn the hard way that you cannot, um, you cannot put on an airplane a snow globe that is from the Statue of Liberty unless you put it into your checked item. But they were putting them on as they're carried on, out of them, 'cause they didn't want them to break, and they're all confiscated because it has to be a checked item. So, we learned that the hard way. This is at our restaurant for the evening, this is John's Pizzeria. Um, it was actually made in a church, and what you just saw there was stained glass that was in the ceiling. Um, it's sort of a unique place to, to eat, was that particular spot. This was our meal before we went and watched Wicked. Um, Wicked was our evening activity, and, um, it did not disappoint. Several of us had seen Wicked in other venues, but it's really cool to see it on Broadway. It really is neat. This is us after the, uh, the musical, and this is us at Times Square. This is a, one of our pictures we have, and that picture right there is actually from EarthCam. You can watch from, on EarthCam, you can watch that particular spot 24/7. And my brother-in-law actually sent us that picture, he said, hey, I see you're getting your picture there, and so, he sent it to us, and so, that was it. And, um, this is the next morning, this is Wednesday, this is the big day. This is the day we actually go to Carnegie Hall to perform and rehearse. Um, but before we do so, we go to the, um, National Museum of American History, and we get to see all the stuff that takes place there. And two and a half hours is not near enough time, and that's what we had for that particular event. And we went from this to, we went back, the students were allowed to pick up a lunch on their own. Um, my particular lunch happened to be a piece of cheesecake. I thought that would be a great lunch right before rehearsal, and so, that's what I decided to have. I've learned there is different grades of New York cheesecake. Uh, cheesecake that costs, um, at a reception $125, it's really, really good. This wasn't bad, that one is, I think, about $10 or $12 for that slice, but, uh, they can be real expensive. This is actually the marquee at Carnegie Hall that shows us on there. Um, that's on a sixth floor thing. Um, if you go to Carnegie Hall, you actually have a dressing room to get your name attached to it. This particular dressing room has in our, this is our warm-up room, and those posters show groups that actually have warmed up in there before. So, in our room, we had had, um, in there, we'd had Tony Bennett, we'd had Duke Ellington, we'd had Fats Waller, and all of those guys had also used my dressing room. This picture is very important, is the fact that that was our students' very first time to ever see Carnegie Hall from their viewpoint, and this is their pictures of what they saw when they walked on there to rehearse. And this is our rehearsal that Wednesday afternoon. But the, uh, the, in the dressing room, there's a piano, a Steinway piano, and with that particular piano, that would be one that Tony Bennett or Duke Ellington would have played on. These pictures, like I said, are the artists who have performed there beforehand. This is us with our marquee, um, that we have. And then we go back for our evening meal, which is a box lunch from Premier. And then, um, we are back into our tuxedos and dresses, and this is probably the thing that has had the biggest hit on Facebook. These are where we group the students by their elementary schools and put them together so that they could be seen for their schools, and then we send them to each, uh, principal so that they could connect them, say, even you could end up at Carnegie Hall. Uh, this is the only time our students sort of asked, were asked to be quieter in the hotel, because they were really excited to get together that way, and they were a little bit noisy, so. Um, that's the Carnegie Hall playbill, that is an actual VIP, uh, room that you just saw there. And this is us setting up on stage, and then these are some of our performance pictures. Performance-wise, I don't know if we could get anything any better. The concert was, was a tremendous job by our students. I know I could not ask any more from them in the process of, of getting it done, and everyone should be extremely proud of the students, including themselves, for this particular performance. Um, as I have moved farther away from that particular date, the more I realize the significance of what this actually is. There is not a more famous venue to perform in worldwide than Carnegie Hall. And these students will remember this 20 years from now when they look back and they say, I was a part of that group. About this time on this particular piece, I was starting to realize that, um, we only got one tune left, and we're fixing to be done, and this has been way too short. We would love to have done it again, and so, that's what we ended up with, is, is in the feeling of, it's too short, we need to do it again.
Wouldn't you tell them the trials and tribulations of your COVID?
I will do that. Um, we did have some trials and tribulations, yes. Um, the first thing is there were policies by Carnegie Hall, and we discovered once we got to New York, that some of those policies were from an, a, um, a firm that Carnegie Hall had farmed everything out to. Um, number one, um, state of New York requires everybody to be vaccinated to it, and as in, and they, you have to show your vaccination cards, but to go into Carnegie Hall, you had to be vaccinated. And if you're going to be on stage, you had to, um, have a negative RT PCR test, um, 72 hours before you were to go on stage. And that seven, that RT PCR is a very, um, important term, because that's what we wrestled with in New York. We had taken our test, and we got there, and the first thing they told us was, um, your test will not work. You need to be retested the next morning. And after an hour and a half with a, our doctor being with us and him explaining, no, this is the correct test, and them being able to prove it through the, the ladies at the lab, as in Dr. Jutan, we were very fortunate that we did not have to retest, and everybody had tested negative, and we were able to go on. But it was a, Monday was not a very fun day once we got there. These are pictures on, the last day, on Thursday, we have, on this particular day, we were supposed to take a tour through Chinatown and Little Italy, of which we sort of did, but, um, the, the step-on guides that were showing us this were wanting us to show more things than we had already seen. So, we saw Grand, uh, we saw Central Park more often than what we wanted to. We were really supposed to spend more time, um, at the Brooklyn Bridge and, um, at Grand Central Station. We do go to those, but we did not have as much time there as we would like. And by the way, you can walk across the Brooklyn Bridge and back in less than 30 minutes. When you think that there are students that are still ahead of you, I promise you, you can do so, because that's exactly what I did. We had 30 minutes to be on the Brooklyn Bridge to take a picture, but I thought they were still ahead of me, so I walked all the way across, found out, nope, they're all the back on the other side, and came back and still less than 30 minutes. So, that's, that was a good trek. This is Grand Central Station. Um, if you notice here, they're all up against a, uh, up against the wall. They, they knew instantly everywhere we went. It was like, all right, line up against walls, we can head count, and so, that's what we did. This is us leaving LaGuardia. Um, this particular trip is going back through, um, St. Louis, and so, those are pictures of us through St. Louis. And, um, that's the end of the presentation there, um, Mr. Stahl. But anyway, I would like to, uh, thank you once again for letting this trip happen. Um, it is, it is a really, a truly special event for our school district. Um, it's one of those things where, that we are now a part of the Carnegie Hall history. They have not updated their history as of yet, but you can go back through and you can look through their database, and once we are, once they have updated it, you'll be able to look up Russellville High School Symphonic Band, and it will show you what date that particular group performed. Just like there was a picture or two that you saw of the Beatles, you can look up the Beatles, and it will tell you the exact date that the Beatles performed. By the way, their poster is on level two, or floor two, um, of that, and that was an interesting thing as well. Um, when you get there, you gotta understand that Carnegie Hall has been open for over, um, what, I think their first event was 1891 is the first time they had an event, and we're still using the same areas and still using the same process. They do have an elevator, you saw the pictures of the elevator, but our very first time to get to our rehearsal area, which was the sixth floor, was by stairs, carrying all of our equipment. And there were little bitty steps that you'd go like, five steps up, turn right, five steps up, or actually, five steps up, turn left, five steps up, turn left, five steps up, turn left. And so, you're trekking through that and get about halfway up, and the students are, they're winded, because you're literally like running up bleachers, and you're saying, how far we gotta go? How far we gotta go? And they say, well, it's just a little bit farther. Well, the person who was leading us is a dancer from New York, so for her, and she wasn't carrying anything, it was no big deal, she just ran up the steps. But, um, if you're lugging tubas and everything else, that becomes a chore to get to the sixth floor. So, we were able to use the elevator for the rest of it, and that's what they, and students enjoyed that. Like I said, I appreciate y'all allowing us to go. We had, uh, Mr. Holt and his wife with us, and I believe they had a, a good time as well with us, so, uh, thank you once again.
Mr. Dove?
Hey, can I? I, I'll be real brief, I just wanna make a couple of comments. Uh, Mr. Dove, uh, you're, you're thanking us, I wanna thank you. And you said something a minute ago, I think you way underestimated, and that was, uh, related to, you know, they're gonna remember that in 20 years. I, I think something like that has much more of an impact, not just in their, in their memories, but in their, uh, success in life, uh, 'cause, and, and it may not hit all of them the same, but, you know, students experiencing something like that gives them, uh, motivation to get back there, one way or another, to see similar things, to, to get out. And, uh, just an example, I mean, this district's been great to my kids. My son Jordan was in ninth grade, and he went to Washington with Ms. Bailey on the We the People trip, and he still remembers every detail of that to this day. And I think that's part of the reason why he likes traveling and getting out and seeing, because he talked about that trip for I don't know how long, and that's motivated him. And like I said, he loves traveling. But things like this, and, uh, everyone in this district has opportunities to have impacts on, on our children. I could name a bunch of names, I, but, you know, I named Ms. Bailey, uh, Jeff Holt, Cody Mann, Josh Edgen, all of them had pretty big impacts on my son. But stuff like this i- is, I think it can motivate kids in ways you don't. Well, I, I think it's awesome, and, you know, I, I feel sorry for my kids that they inherited my lack of any musical talent whatsoever, so they can see stuff like that, but, uh, I appreciate it, uh, for everything y'all do. And I just hope everyone understands the impact that each one of you can have on, on our students.
Thank you, Mr. Dove. I heard, uh, LaGuardia to St. Louis late at night, which tells me you're on Southwest, and you probably left St. Louis about 10:35 for about an 11:40 arrival into Little Rock. And, uh, unfortunately, I have been on that flight many, many, many times. So, okay, down to number seven on the consent agenda. Is there anything we need to discuss off the consent agenda at this time? All right, if no objections, I'm gonna say the consent agenda is considered passed at this time, which moves us to number eight, finance. Mr. Robertson, the floor's yours, sir.
All right, we'll make up a little time on this one, since Mr. Holt has our master plan. Um, we go to the next page, next slide on that one, we'll look at our legal balance with fund one, two, and four. We ended up 793,198. I'd just like to make a note there that I'll be making every month, that, uh, up until this point, we made, we've spent about 800,000 in CARES Act a year ago. Sorry. And then, uh, if our debt service was, you know, all the refundings caused us to be off on payments, but if our debt service was still payment to payment, year to year on the, the CARES Act, uh, that actually would be up about 455,000. Now, that's up because I'd like to make a note that we chose to do the recruitment and retention, uh, pay bonus instead of doing the bonus which is gonna operate it. So, that's about 600,000, so that's the reason we're up, that's a good thing. The next slide, there's, uh, we got our, the one that's, uh, speak of there is our food service. I was gonna have Mr. Connerly come up and kind of do a report, but I knew it might be a long night. Um, he's happy to come next month and the, uh, the month after, but the reason we're up there is, uh, you'll see that mainly because the reimbursement rates are up and our meals are up, since every kid's getting eat free. So, we thought last year was gonna be good, I think this year's gonna be even better. So, and I would like to make a note of that, uh, 878,000, we're still waiting on all 150 of it, of the equipment to, uh, come in, so.
Also, along the lines of food service, he's gonna, what's he doing for Thursday and Friday, right?
Yes, that's what we did, we worked on today, so they'll be sending. Yeah, they'll be sending meals home, preparing meals to be sent home, uh, tomorrow afternoon, that would cover Thursday and Friday.
Got it. Got it. Okay, at this time, I'd like to accept a motion to approve period six financial report.
Jeremy make that motion.
Thank you, Jeremy.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. We got a motion by Keister, second by Ms. Hall. Any more discussion? A show of hands, all in favor? Pass is unanimous. That brings us down to number nine, policy.
The, you're going to talk about, go ahead.
I'm just here for whatever questions you have.
Well, I was going to make, we met with Ms. Pennington, the school board, met with Ms. Pennington on January the 4th and for about an hour and a half and discussed several policies, along with Mr. Hodge was there that day also. And so I would, I know that we may need to discuss this some more, but I would like to make a motion that we approve A and B on the policy. And then we could have discussion if needed.
Motion by Ms. Nguyen to approve A and B under policy number nine.
I'll second.
Okay, I'm going to second, second by Ms. Hall. Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Nguyen, a second by Ms. Hall. Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Nguyen?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Jeremy's a yes.
Mr. Jackamore?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Pennington. Brings us down to number nine, building and grounds.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Mr. Barrett to approve building and grounds.
Second.
Second by Mr. Keister. I buy a show of hands, all in favor. It is unanimous. Thank you, board.
Jeff, Jeff has to present.
I think legally we have to.
Legally, you've got to tell you.
I'm just going to give you a couple of points real quick. We have to present this to the state every, every two years and it's in every even year that we have to do this. So it's a pretty extensive process. Just giving you an idea of how things were figured, district-wide facilities and enrollment. We have, they figured 5,212 enrollment, students in our enrollment. We've got 33 permanent buildings, 13 temporary buildings and 1.5 million gross square footage, a little bit over that. So one thing I did want to note is we did not agree with the enrollment notation. They showed us showing a decrease in enrollment through the years. That'll be tab four, but we don't agree with that. That hasn't happened here since I've been here and it's sure not going to happen from here on out because of the things that we're getting ready to do with this district. So just real quickly, we have 15 projects that we've committed to. We've got 29 projects that we have planned. We were, when we were working with the co-op, you know, he looked at our master plan and it's extremely aggressive, but we feel very, very comfortable that we can get those. Most of those are the new HVAC systems that we're going to put in our buildings in the next, in the next year, so. And again, I've already explained our custodial and maintenance and how hard they worked and what their role is in trying to keep COVID down and it's a 24-hour job with them. And I just wanted to say thank you to Chris Campbell and everyone that's a part of his crew because they do just a fantastic job, so.
Thank you, Mr. Holt.
Jason, real quick, if we could back up just on the salary schedules, just real quick. The, in that meeting, we discussed a few options. But the, one of the first things we asked Mr. Vining to do was fix the salary schedules. So I think that's what this did, was fix it. This isn't the end of it. We kicked around several options in that meeting. I think we're investigating some other stuff. So we have time to revisit it before the next budget cycle. I know Jason, Justin and Mr. Vining and the entire leadership team is going to be looking at that, looking at finances going forward. So as long as we, we're going to continue working on that and look at it before the next budget, is my understanding.
Agreed.
And is that what the CPSC understands also?
I don't know if there's anybody from CPSC.
Or. I forget. PC, what, I don't get all those acronyms.
So.
Exactly right, whatever it's called.
Oh, we got away without you talking.
Yeah, yeah, I thought so. But as far as this goes, since, technically, there are two policies on Part B there that pertain to the PPC. The first policy is for the certified teacher salary schedule. That particular policy that you're voting on today was brought to you by the district administration. And so at this time, since you approved it, we'll go into that 10-day period where now the PPC will review it. We will develop our response and then we will present our response at the next meeting. The second, the second one, the administrative salary schedule, we actually discussed at our last meeting and we voted to approve that policy and so that will go, y'all adopted that and it goes into policy next year now. That's the status right now.
But as far as, I mean, we, as long as I've been on the board, we've constantly worked on teacher salaries and trying to improve that. There were some things we had to fix. This stuff, this, what we approved tonight was part of that fix and we're going to continue looking and moving forward and trying to make improvements, is my understanding.
And then we will of course have a meeting as quickly as possible to get a response made and then be ready to present at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We have to get this on record on the board resolution. You guys have to vote, so we have it on record to send to the state.
So we need a motion to approve the Russellville School District 2022 master plan. Is that correct, Mr. Holt?
And do we correct the mistakes in enrollment or is that just, is what it is, what they?
It's just a guess. The projection.
Oh, live duck.
How would, entertain a motion?
I got it, okay.
I make a, I make a motion that we approve the resolution.
Got a motion by Ms. Nguyen?
Second.
Second by Mr. White. With a show of hands, all in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Holt, for keeping us in between the ditches there.
I've done this for 20 years. I'm sure glad that there's somebody else to do it. But Jeff did.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Vining. Okay.
I didn't do it. Jeff did it. I'm just glad he did.
Down to number 10, personnel?
Eleven.
Okay, I'm minus number 10. Whatever, down to personnel.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion by Mr. Jackamore?
Morgan?
Motion by Mr. Barrett?
Second.
Second by Keister. Show of hands, all in favor? It is unanimous. We do have to go into executive session for a quick evaluation. However, it's been brought to my attention that we do need to clarify one piece of information before tomorrow. Does this board wish to continue to, I hate to use the word mandate, but to enforce mask tomorrow or no mask tomorrow? So we need to have that motion one way or the other.
I thought we passed the plan to be initiated on Tuesday. Well, the AMI packets, but then the, all the masks, no mask warrant, whatever, the rest of the plan on Tuesday.
I just need to, I just, they're asking, asking for clarification. So with that said, we will still have masks tomorrow. Is that correct?
If, what you voted on tonight starts Thursday, you know, AMI, then the program starts Tuesday. If you do not vote otherwise, we will still be under the same mandate tomorrow we are today. Unless you vote otherwise.
So we can make a motion to remove masks tomorrow. I make that motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Keister to remove the masks for tomorrow. Second. Motion fails. We will have masks tomorrow. Is that fair?
Everything will proceed tomorrow as today. And then we will, Thursday and Friday AMI and then Tuesday we'll start under this policy.
It is 8 o'clock. We do have to go into a quick executive session and I do hope it's quick. Thank you.
I don't know what I hear.